This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, welcome, everybody. It's so nice to see everyone for our Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 business meeting. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite up Pastor Jason Vandever for our invocation. Welcome, Pastor.
Afternoon. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you and, Lord, we're grateful for all that you continue to do. We're grateful for your son whom you've sent to spare us from ourselves, from this world. Lord, we pray for your will to be done on earth as it is in heaven, Lord. And we pray for wisdom in these times in which we live. We pray especially wisdom for our leaders. We pray for the salvation of those that don't know you. We pray for those that do, for their strength, for their families. We pray that you would just guide this time, this agenda, Lord, in small things and in great things. Lord, we pray that there would continue to be an environment, that there would be an opportunity, that there would be freedom for people to be able to come to know you in eternal life. Lord, we pray that you would have your hand upon all things, and especially, Lord, that you would continue to work in the affairs of those that you have created. We love you, Lord. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. We greatly appreciate you. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
You do, sir. County Attorney's Office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over all these matters.
Great. Thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for any items on this agenda today?
No, sir. Nope.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move into item two, which is ceremonies and proclamations. We have two really great ones today. The first is payment in lieu of taxes, pilt funding provided to fire protection districts assisting in coverage of the Pike National Forest lands in Douglas County. Mike Alexander, I don't believe, is here, but we have an individual who's providing an update from emergency management on the pilt. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Josh Lewis here for staff. Today, I'm presenting the payment in lieu of taxes, the federal funding provided to fire protection districts assisting in coverage of the Pike National lands in Douglas County in a total amount of $100,000. Beginning in 2002 and every year thereafter, Douglas County has provided supplemental funding for the six fire districts represented by the fire chief seated up front today that respond to incidents within the Pike National Forest areas of Douglas County. These districts are Jackson 105, Larksburg, Mountain Communities, North Fork Fire, West Douglas, and West Metro Fire Protection Districts. Pike National Forest manages about 140,000 acres of forest lands within the county, yet does not have any firefighting resources stationed in our county. We rely heavily on the fire districts represented here today to provide emergency services and rapid initial response of wildfires within that area. Not only do these departments respond to wildfires, structured fires, and vehicle fires, they also respond to the medical emergencies, motor vehicle crashes, and search and rescue missions within the Pike. Adding to their challenges, the majority of the fire districts are staffed primarily, if not completely, by volunteers. We are thankful for their help and grateful to you, Commissioners, for making this funding available in support of their missions. For 2025, the county approved $100,000 to be distributed among the six districts. These districts responded 151 times into the Pike National Forest in 2024. The distribution is based on a cost per call set at $662. If it pleases the board, I'd like to call each of these chiefs up one by one to discuss their plans for spending their pilt distributions. We can start with Jackson 105.
That's fine. Welcome.
Oh. Looks like we don't have representative from Jackson 105 today. Let's move to Larksburg Fire, please.
Tim McCauley, Fire Chief for Larksburg Fire, will be spending our money on PPE and wildland equipment for the staff to better respond to emergencies.
Thank you, Chief. Mountain Communities.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Abby Parker. I'm a captain with Mountain Communities. Thanks for having us today. Thank you to the board for providing these funds, which are a huge boost to our all-volunteer department. This past year, we had approximately 15 combined fires between the Turkey Track Shooting Range and Rainbow Falls Park, and 40 rescues in Pike National Forest in Douglas County. This year, we plan to use our funds on wildland fire gear for our firefighters, progressive hose packs, and additional fire hose for our main station in West Creek. We greatly appreciate your support, so thank you again from all of us at Mountain Communities.
Thank you.
North Fork Fire.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kurt Rogers, Chief of North Fork Fire Protection District. Soon to be Connor for Fire Protection District. We're actually joining with a couple other fire districts to our north and making a bigger Fire Protection District in Jefferson County and covering in Douglas County. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to receive these funds. They're really invaluable to us as a rural fire department. We're planning on spending our funds again on PPE, wildland PPE, and structural PPE this year coming up. And we just, I wanted to point out, we just had a wildland fire a couple weeks ago in the Trumbull area that burned about three and a half acres. So wildland season last year round now. And again, thank you for providing this funding to the departments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. West Douglas Fire.
Thank you, Commissioners. John Orvez, Fire Chief, West Douglas Fire Protection District. As you know, for the past, I believe it was seven or eight years, we've been saving our pilt funds towards the purchase of water tanks in our district. We are continuing, that is where this check is intended to go as well, to our water tank project, which we are working in conjunction with the U.S. Forest Service on for a location to hopefully get a bigger, more robust system on land that we can use that is part of the National Forest System. We're also in the National Forest with a large portion of our district and an all-volunteer department. So when I say that we all appreciate all that you have done and all that you continue to do, it's heartfelt. Thank you for your consideration and for your time today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have anybody from West Metro Fire here today? Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioners. As I think you've heard, the money provided through this program will continue our collective goal of hitting wildfires hard, heavy, and fast here in the county while saving lives and property. Are there any questions you have for me at this time?
Well, Josh, thank you so much for that presentation and to all the chiefs and the departments. Can't thank you enough. This is tremendous. I'll have a few comments, but let me open it up to our Board of County Commissioners for their thoughts and questions.
No questions, sir.
Okay. Well, I would say we just finished our wildfire action collaborative meeting as Douglas County, and I would heartily invite each of you or your representatives to attend those meetings. I'm really proud of this board as we recently traveled to Washington, D.C., and met with the Department of the Interior and the Forest Service directly around the potential threat to our community, and there is no hotter or redder area than perhaps California and the entire country that faces the threat of wildfire danger. So we are very, very proactive in this space. As you know, we are not going to do anything that puts your communities at risk. We are going to continue to be very thoughtful around mitigation and prevention, but continue to welcome your input. I think we'd love to see you at the table with your thoughts because ultimately, we'll be asking the federal government and our state partners, as well as our county budget, to really look at ways in which we can mitigate fires in our communities. So thank you so much for being here today. How about a big round of applause for everybody out there today? I do believe we have been asked by our communications to come down for a photo, so if you'll come up to the dais, we'll join you down here at the dais.
He really went light on our meeting with the Fire Forest Service. It went super well. It really went well, and so, you know, we'll be getting on top of the new range at Turkey Tracks. We've already got the designs in place that are going to eliminate a lot of those flyaway bullets that are the real source of the fires that you guys have to deal with. And we've got that, that go-ahead came out two weeks ago, and we've got an action plan to start moving on it to help out. And then let us know how you work with the Forest Service with the tank location, because that was super meaningful.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for that. Our next item is also very near and dear to our hearts. We're really focusing so much on public safety today, as we do every day, but this is an important one for us. Item two B is a resolution recognizing school resource officers. If it pleases the board, I'll go ahead and read the resolution on behalf of the county. A resolution recognizing school resource officers. Whereas Douglas County has the largest school resource officer team in the state, with 43 officers protecting every elementary, middle, and high school in the county. Whereas, school resource officers of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office are specially trained to work in the school environment with children and young adults, addressing their specific needs, challenges, and safety concerns. Whereas, every school resource officer attends a training sponsored by the National Association of School Resource Officers and attends refresher training sponsored by the Colorado Association of School Resource Officers locally and nationally to stay on the cutting edge of this field. Whereas, Douglas County is dedicated to the safety, well-being, and education of children, with commissioners investing in school safety and resources, including voting unanimously in 2024 to share costs with the schools for the funding of seven new resource officers to provide Douglas County with the largest team in Colorado. Whereas, School Resource Officers Appreciation Day is nationally recognized on February 15th, 2025 this year, but due to their significant impact on Douglas County, the Board of Douglas County Commissioners wishes to recognize their contributions for a full week, declaring February 17th through February 21st as School Resource Officer Appreciation Week. With that, I know we have a video that our Director of Communications would like to share. Caroline?
That went under.
Yeah.
I know how I would approach this. How do you guys, how do you guys approach this?
Really impressive to see. Every time you walk in classroom, the entire classroom lights up.
Nineteen? That's easy. Oh, I get a star. Nice.
The kids are coming up to you. They're showing you their footwear selection of the day.
Horse four.
And then you talk to them, and they talk to you like friends.
It's pretty obvious that you have a great relationship with the kids here.
That's the goal. I think that's the ultimate goal.
Be yourself and be there for the kids.
Show up as yourself.
Exactly.
Do you want this pressure? Are you sure? Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Stop reading my mind. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
Playing rock, paper, scissors with a kid or doing football.
Bo Nix ain't got nothing on me.
Do you allow the kids to be comfortable with you? And then, when they're comfortable, they're allowed to tell you things that they normally wouldn't?
Exactly.
That relationship is critically important. They truly make a difference in these kids' lives. They truly make a difference in the safety of each campus. Our SROs are handpicked by the Sheriff's Office and the school district just to ensure that we've got a good fit. Bottom line is that SRO is there to save lives. God forbid that they're needed in that role.
Has there been a particular moment that really stands out to you?
A hard time in my life was when we had the incident at STEM School. I was actually over at Ballard when that happened.
So much of what we're doing today with school resource officers is upon reflection of what occurred and trying to invest so that a tragedy like that doesn't happen again.
You have that one moment, that one thing that occurs.
The main one that really stands out is one of our students was feeling suicidal. She went up to the rock up here in Castle Rock and was texting a friend that she was going to jump off.
A few years ago, I had a student that was in crisis. She was self-harming.
There's been many times that I've talked to kids and just really just let them know that I'm there for them, no matter what it is.
But ever since then, she hangs out with me all the time.
She's actually doing really well.
That's fantastic.
She graduated, and everything's going great.
That gives me goosebumps because you'll never know all of the lives that you have impacted by your presence in this building.
Not in this house, Daniel.
This is the best police officer ever.
No matter how upset your parents get at you, trust me, I know this, your parents will still love and respect you.
On behalf of the county, I just want to thank you so much.
It's not just us that are behind you guys. It's all 400,000 people that live here.
Oh, boy. Thank you, guys. That's great, guys.
How about a round of applause for our SROs? With that, I know we have so many members of our distinguished Sheriff's Office here with us. If any of you would like to join us and make any comments at the podium, we'd welcome you at this time. And I see, Under Sheriff Walter.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity. Again, Under Sheriff Dave Walter from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Weekly, as you know, could not be here today, but I'm very happy to be here representing our organization. And I also will say that we've got members from the Lone Tree Police Department, Castle Rock Police Department, as well as the school district sitting back there too, in support of all of this. You know, I'm very proud of this. And in retrospect, and I have a long history with SROs, in retrospect, I believe we started our SRO program in roughly 1990 or 1991, and one of those first SROs was now Chief Kevin Duffy. And now we get to a situation where we have 43 FTEs committed to our SRO program. And what you won't see here today are actually the men and women that are doing the work, because where are they right now? They're in our schools. But I will say Lieutenant Rob Rotherham is here. He runs the program. We have three of our sergeants, Sergeant Scott Weber, Sergeant Chad Teller, and Sergeant Mark Mathune back there. Of course, Chief McIntosh runs law enforcement, but the SROs are where they need to be today, and that is in our schools. And I'm very proud of what we have here. You know, in this, without the support of the sheriff, Darren Weekly, and without the support of the schools, Johnny Gruising, thank you for all of your support, and Aaron Kane, obviously, and to our Board of County Commissioners, that's what makes this happen, folks. And in Douglas County, we like SROs in our schools. I love SROs in our schools. I think it's absolutely invaluable. The other thing I'd like to say, a few things, this is an invaluable asset, and in some other places, they might talk about how there's a, quote, "school-to-prison pipeline." And I will tell you, in Douglas County, we don't have a school-to-prison pipeline. We're in there to develop relationships, provide help when needed, respond to emergencies when needed, but we're not about arresting people out of schools and things like that. It's truly a great partnership that we have, and I'm very proud of that partnership. And I want to give you just a couple statistics that I want you to absorb. Right now, you talked about 43 FTEs in our schools, and we've gotten, you know, a command structure and supervisory structure set up, but we have SROs in seven high schools, three of which are doubled up with SROs because of their size, five middle schools, seven charter schools, four private schools, and we've got 11 in our elementary school zones. So we don't even forget about the youngest of our students in Douglas County. So we've got 11 of those, again, thanks to your help. So we serve a total of 57 schools. We also, of the SROs, think about this, an average of 17 years of law enforcement experience that you saw, and six of those are as SROs that experience. We do, as you mentioned, the largest program in the state of Colorado. We have the most NASRO practitioners in 26. And think about this, in school year 2024, there were 3,035 safe-to-tell tips that were handled by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Parker Police Department, Castle Rock Police Department, and the Lone Tree Police Department. We take this seriously, and there's not, in my opinion, there's not a better investment of county taxpayer dollars, including the school district, in putting these deputy sheriffs in our schools. And I just want to tell you, thank you for that support. Thank you for recognizing our SROs, and we truly do appreciate it. So my thanks. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Under Sheriff. Any questions or comments from our Board of County Commissioners?
As Mr. Chair, if I could, I just, I completely agree. You said that there's not a better investment of taxpayer resources, and I completely agree. As a parent myself with kids in Douglas County schools, I rest easy knowing that Deputy Walker is there day in and day out. It's not just his presence there, although his presence there is tremendous. Even just having his vehicle parked outside is tremendous for us parents. But also, he really is spending time with him over the years, and especially the day that I was able to spend with him. He, in particular, and I think this speaks for all the SROs, not just him, he's just the one I've had the luck of interacting with over the years, knows, gets to know the kids and knows when a kid comes to the door in the morning without even speaking with them, can really identify, there's something off about Johnny, or, and I want to talk to him. And there's a lot of circumstances too, where there's a student that won't talk to their parents, they won't talk to their counselor, they won't talk to their teacher, but the SRO is someone that they can go to, and they really feel comfortable talking to them, not just during school hours, but during all hours of the day and night. And I personally could never express enough gratitude to the men and women of our SRO force and our Douglas County Sheriff's Office and all the other deputies and police departments that make it possible, because kids, they deserve a safe environment to learn in, and especially here in Colorado, that's been something that parents have questioned and had good reason to worry about. But parents in Douglas County, can they, they can drop off their kids and feel comfortable going about their day. And there's so much that parents will never know. There's so much that we, as Commissioners, will never see that happens in our schools behind the scenes. There's so many incidents that get avoided, and a lot of that is because of the, just the caring, diligent, heartfelt work of our SROs. So my sincere thanks to everyone involved from the very top with Deputy, with Sheriff Weekly, yourself, I believe it's Rotherman?
Rotherham.
Rotherham. My apologies, sir. Down to each individual school and each deputy going in between even the elementary schools. My sincere thanks to them from the bottom of my heart, from my family's heart. And I think it's part of keeping Douglas County safe is we start with the kids, we start with our schools, and we do everything possible beyond there to make Douglas County safe for our citizens.
Well said, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. I think my message today is to the leadership of the SRO program and the Sheriff's Department. And I said it in the video, you know, the most common denominator of support that I always hear out on the street with our Sheriff's Department is the SRO program. It's, I was not exaggerating when I tell you, it's the public here in Douglas County that support the SROs. Guys, we love you. We're here for you. We appreciate that your deputies that are on duty in our schools are there for us and there for our kids. We know that. We appreciate that. This resolution is, you know, one way that we have to express our gratitude. And sometimes the phrase "talk is cheap," please take these words in this resolution to heart, that indeed, people of Douglas County are behind our Sheriff's Department and behind our SRO program, to include all you guys from Castle Rock and Lone Tree and the other municipalities. We know you're out there. We know you're doing the job, and we're with you too.
Great. Well said, Commissioner. Well, I always like to go back to the why. What is our why? And for those watching and for citizens out there, either here with us in person or just parents in our community, they might ask, why is the Board of County Commissioners involved with school resource officers? Isn't the school district its own independent entity? And I go back seven years ago to 2019, when I was a brand-new commissioner. And, Under Sheriff, I know you are no stranger to really serious school tragedies, and your predecessor was the one who texted me in May of 2019 about the STEM shooting. And within minutes, we were down at the AMC giving a press conference to the nation about something that should never occur. And immediately after that moment, this Board of County Commissioners moved into action to provide over $13 million of funding for mental health, for physical school security, and for school resource officers, seeing that as the three-legged stool. And, you know, I think Commissioner Teal, you stated very well, there is no source of safety for our kids that is more significant and more personal than school resource officers, that human component, that relationship building. You know, in any of these circumstances, if you ask a school community or a class of students, who is that one student that's really having a tough time? That's really not connecting? That's really struggling? 99% of the time, everyone can kind of say, I know, I know that person. I know who that is. But it's that much easier when you have a trained member of law enforcement that's there on a daily basis, providing that relational support. So it is a tremendous honor to me today to be before each and every one of you for your leadership, the fact that seven years have gone by, and because of your work and dedication to our community, we have not had another STEM. Again, it goes back to that word of the year, proactive, whether it's wildfires or all the other issues we're thinking about. SROs are such a critical piece of getting ahead of that potential danger, and you have done that so well. And to be the county that has the highest number of school resource officers in the state, that's just tremendous. So, Under Sheriff, thank you for your leadership. Our thanks to Sheriff Weekly for his leadership and for everyone involved in the organization. Tremendous thanks. With that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item? Yes, sir.
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy.
Hello. Thank you. Gordon Moser, I'm one of our executive directors of schools in Douglas County, and our superintendent, Aaron Kane, was not able to be here, but wants to make sure that we're representing and saying thank you. Thank you for the support. Thank you for the recognition of our school resource officers who are an integral part of our school community, as you alluded to, with the proactiveness and the connected adult and being able to have a trusted adult in the building and the perception of what a police officer is in Douglas County. We very value, we value that. It's very, it's very good that we're recognizing these officers that are with our kids every day, and just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Douglas County Schools for making, making this opportunity.
Thank you, sir, and our thanks to Superintendent Kane. Please take back our thanks to her. And, you know, since the tragedy, we had matching funds, and because of her leadership- funds, and because of her leadership and the work of this Board of Education, those funds were matched by the school districts. So this could not have been done without your partnership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys, for allowing us to be here. My name's Chris Zimmerman. I'm the principal at Simraun Middle School, and wanted to come up and just say a couple words because the last time I was in this room is when you guys approved that $13 million and was a part of one of those physical safety committees. And standing here today, it's just an honor to be a part of the work that has happened over the last six or seven years to really support our students in our buildings. Want to point out a couple people that have really driven this. Johnny Gruising has just been an amazing leader in this space back there. And then also, one other name is Mark Mathune. He is the president of our Colorado Association of School Resource Officers and really supports this effort across the state in providing a good example of what this is and it continues to be within our county. So thank you all, and thank you for the partnerships. We can certainly feel it as principals in the school as we collaborate with our SROs on a daily basis. It's a very rich relationship that we have with our SROs, and it is much appreciated that you guys are here to honor them. Thank you.
Well, Chris, before you go too far, it's an honor to see you again and under better circumstances, and anecdotally, we continue to hear about your great leadership as a tremendous principal in our community. So thank you for your heart and passion all these years.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Additional citizen comment? Okay, with that, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Sheriff, please, the board, I do have a resolution recognizing school resource officers in Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. And is that a motion to approve?
Apologies. A motion to approve. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm proud to second that motion.
Great. We have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Congratulations and thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. I'll first open it up for any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to any item on our consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the requests on all items on the consent agenda, and those would be items A through L.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. With that, we'll move to item four, which is citizen comments, organization comments, if time allows. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda, which was already allotted some time for public comment. This is now an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments calling for violent action or criminal behavior are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kim Greer, and I live in the southern, far southern part of the county. Since the last time I addressed the Commission, Larkspur Fire Protection District and the Perry Park Metro Boards have unanimously passed resolutions against proposed camping in Sandstone. I appreciate the impulse to make Douglas County open spaces as accessible as possible. We must acknowledge the state and county taxes paid for the acquisition of the property. Specifically, a $3.5 million grant award from Great Outdoors Colorado was obtained in exchange for the conservation easement on the entire ranch. Allowing camping does not substantially increase the access and enjoyment in a manner consistent with the original intent of the easement or plan. A Commissioner commented on 11 February 2025 that we are camping in our homes. We are not camping. This is our neighborhood. We are here to stay. Are we blessed to live here? Of course we are. People camping come to temporarily recreate. Homes are monitored, have fire alarms. Homes are located on roads that can be accessed by fire trucks. Access to homes in the larger, in the largest community in our district could be put at risk. I have read both the easement and the plan. Camping is not mentioned in either. The master plan is due for update, but easements are legally binding documents governing use in perpetuity. Per the conservation easement, page 21, section G, pertaining to the use of areas outside of existing building trail envelopes, quote, "Grantor shall promptly and diligently re-vegetate any disturbed areas with native seed and/or vegetation," end quote. Evaluation of the easement by conservation easement lawyers may be required. Commissioners directed staff to investigate the feasibility of camping on our open spaces. This pilot program is said to be in a preliminary stage, yet the County Open Space Advisory Council has not yet been consulted in a working meeting. We also understand that the stated timeframe for initiation of camping is Memorial Day 2025. Isn't this an aggressive schedule, and how much money has been expended so far? An initial estimate for the pilot sites at Sandstone is $379,400 for the first year and $100,000 per each subsequent year. With the concerns voiced by your constituents, as you said, employers and key community boards, LFPD and Perry Park Metro last week, and easement intent, are you going to end this feasibility study now? If not, why not? Irretrievable taxpayer money is being expended. We all need to be good stewards of this space.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comment. Additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment? Troy, do we have any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any Commissioner comments.
I'll go ahead and get us kicked off, Mr. Chair. You know, folks, we do, we really do, ma'am, welcome your comments pertaining to the camping options that are being explored through the county. Obviously, Sandstone Ranch is an area of great concern, and I'll tell you what, I appreciate hearing the comments. I, for one, believe that we, it is citizen comment on the subject that has greatly shaped this proposed recreational amenity to be introduced. And I'm telling you, I think we need to keep working on it. We need to keep welcoming citizen comment on this subject as we continue to work through the process on exploring, whether this is a means of allowing access to public lands here in the county, or perhaps it's something that we will abandon after watching, after taking a look at. I know after years of leadership in Boy Scouts, there was many times that options of having Boy Scout outings on the open spaces here in the county were explored. I know we've had other requests from other users to do something like this. So I'm glad that we're getting good public input to help us shape a possible solution.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any additional Commissioner comment?
No, not today, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. I would echo Commissioner Teal's sentiments. We welcome the comments, and we welcome particularly the input of Larkspur and Perry Park. This investment in Sandstone Ranch was not casual. You know, it's 2,043 acres, over $20 million, a lot of partnership dollars. There is a conservation easement. I don't disagree with much of what was shared. I believe the intent and the spirit of that conservation easement needs to remain intact. I think I shared last time that the balancing I'm weighing is the fact that our entire county owns that property and that we have 400,000 people that would like to enjoy and recreate in our open spaces. How do we do that in a way that is safe, responsible, fire-wise, doesn't cause noise pollution, light pollution, things of that nature? But as a fifth-generation Coloradan that represents Coloradans, I know our citizens like the outdoors, and they like to recreate, and they really like to camp. And right now, our state has made it incredibly difficult to camp in the state without a lot of bureaucracy. So I want to continue to look at ways for us to responsibly camp in Douglas County, but that will not happen without a lot of citizen input, particularly yours. So I welcome the continued conversation. Any additional comments? With that, I'll ask if there's any other business before the board today. Okay. And then I'll turn to our county manager for any county manager update. All right. So the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 11, 2025, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned.